Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council and Work Session. It is Monday, June 8th, 2020. I'm delighted that we are in council chambers. And last, I ask our city recorder to please call Roll for the record. Tracy.
Oh, sorry. Trying to help counsel. Sorry. Counsel Herrera. Counsel Parsons.
Here.
Counsel Smith.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Counsel President Freeman.
Here.
Counsel Reed.
Here.
And Counsel Kohler.
Here.
Thank you very much. Tonight's work session topic is the City Charter Review Committee. And I would like to turn it over to our committee chairs. This was Counselor Smith. And then Counsel President Freeman was also on the task force. And to our city attorney, Shannon Johnson.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, I sent out an email today. I meant to send last week. I don't anticipate spending a lot of time going through every single section tonight. My anticipation is that I'm going to go through some items in the matrix. So if you have the matrix handy. First, I'm going to go through some changes, very minor changes, from that the Charter Review Committee did not see. I made them after that, for reasons I'll get into in a minute. But some of which is I just didn't see them until after. And then I'm going to go over what the committee called the deferred items, which were items that they deferred reviewing until after the public hearing. There's four of those items. And then we'll open it up to questions if that works for everybody. Okay, so if you go to the matrix, and what happened is, is I had made a determination a while back that I was going to have outside council look at this. And I decided, for purposes of efficiency, so I wouldn't be spending too much of the city's money on outside council, I didn't want to have them look at it before the committee finished their review. So I thought that was a good segue as when they finished their review, I'd look at it one more time. I have outside council look at it. And then we'd go over those things. And I found a few changes, and he found a few. So that's what you see in the fifth column over there. And since those are items that the Charter Review Committee did not get to see, even though they're all minor, I wanted to make sure to let you know kind of what those are about. So if you go to the top of the second page, Section 2.3, we, the committee had made a determination. And let me back up and actually... Let's see if I can... here. There's one other item I wanted to mention here. The... One of the things that the committee did in terms of formatting was after, I think, the second meeting or so, we decided format-wise, the league version of the charter, we thought read better. But we wanted to be careful not to make any substantive changes unless they made sense to make. And so we started with the league format. So you can see the section numbers, if you look down the first two columns, are quite a bit different sometimes. But they go in the order of the league's version. So Section 2.3 is entitled "Distributions: The Distribution of Powers." Because of some certain quirks in how we kind of do ordinances and resolutions, sometimes we have ordinances that are quasi-judicial. I had removed two of the sentences from the league version. Outside council suggested adding back at least one. Actually, I came up with the idea of adding back one. In a later session, you'll see, we're not tied to that necessarily. But it was a section having to do with referendum powers. So we want to make sure that the referendum powers are ordinance only. So it's a little technical change. Basically, in 2.3, the next to last sentence in that was added back. The council has legislative administrative and quasi-judicial authority. So stop me any time here on these changes. And they're terribly exciting. I know Elizabeth and Kim can tell you that, you know, I warned the committee at the very first meeting, you don't know what you signed up for. This is likely to be pretty boring. But a lot of it is just wordsmithing and some technical issues. So the next one is in Counsel President. And that is an extremely minor change that I had spotted. The term "counselors" can be confusing because counselors usually include the mayor. But in some places, counselors were just the council. So we use the term "council members." So there's a couple of places throughout that anytime we met everybody, we would use the term "council members," hence including the mayor, so there'd be no confusion. And that's the change in 3.3. Next... Yes. Sorry.
Counsel Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel Johnson. I have the electronic version.
Oh.
So I don't know where you are.
Okay. So if you, do you have the matrix?
Well, I think it's in my electronic version somewhere, yes.
Okay, well, let's wait till everybody has the matrix. I'm sorry, I went a little fast at the beginning. And I don't know, I think it's after the actual charter. So...
I found it.
Okay, are there paper copies anywhere? Or you just have the one?
I know that...
Okay.
That they're in here, but I... here we go. So this is on, I don't even know what page it's on.
It's just after the regular, after the document. After the charter document.
I knew it was in here, I just didn't know where.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Because I'd reviewed it.
Does everybody else have the matrix? The matrix looks like this.
Maybe beneficial.
With all the cells in it. It's after the regular charter. So there's the staff report.
So I have that at least with my county meetings.
Two versions of the charter. So it's probably, oh, I'd say halfway.
It's a giant grid.
Yeah, it's like...
Are you talking about LOC model?
It looks like this.
Yeah.
Does it say LOC model?
No.
Yeah, this is what you want to be looking at.
Does it need an extra...
What section are you on?
Are you online, Elizabeth? It's page 28.
See, and I'm not showing page numbers on here. Maybe there's...
Well, the section numbers are there.
Let me go make a couple copies.
What section are you on?
Oh, there it says 28, okay.
We are on...
Amazing, Grace.
Page three of the matrix. Section... So if you go...
You should have just...
And then when you go to...
Could model the current.
Approve.
Throw it away again.
So when you go to the page three, go all the way over to the right-hand side, the farthest right column. And those are the sections that I'm talking about. Where, so at the top, towards the top of page three, it says Section 3.4. So everybody got that?
Yep.
Okay.
Page three?
Again, 3.4, a minor change, which is kind of funny. It has to do with council procedures. And we have had it by ordinance. And the committee talked about changing that to... By resolution, changing it to ordinance. Basically, outside council suggested just not having any things. Because there might be certain circumstances where we would want to adopt by ordinance, but most of the time it would be by resolution. So I just removed the word "by ordinance." It just says you can adopt them. It doesn't say how. Sometimes less is more, if you know what I mean. So that was a small change there. On the next one, Section 3.5 Sub B, just a clarification on the mayor calling a special meeting. The current version, the 3.5B is a little unclear on mayor's discretion and then at the request of three council members. So it's just slightly reworded to say the mayor shall call a special meeting at the request of three counselors, council members, which is the, I think, the intent. And I'm just going to keep rolling through here unless stopped, okay? So I don't think everybody wants to be here all night. I'll just keep going. The quorum 1.36 is just a slight reworking of the first sentence. Again, not changing the meaning at all. Having to do with the majority of the members being in quorum, excluding vacancies. So if you had, it'd be pretty unusual. But if you actually had two vacant seats at the same time, then a quorum would be three. So that's really what's indicated. And it's always, it already is like that. But this just, we thought read a little clearer. Going on to page four, Section 4.1. Again, a minor change to match up with that first change.
Press pause. Are we...
What was that?
So are you back to the quorum?
You were just looking, your face was like my face earlier, where you were like really thinking about something.
Oh.
And so I was like, is that not what you remember? Or that's so...
No, because I know that was a very hot topic.
Oh, which one? Back to the quorum one?
The quorum, when we had the vacant seat thing.
There's a lot of discussion on that.
There was a lot of discussion, and then what we determined. So could you just, one more time, just kind of go over that if you would like to?
So I remember the discussion. But I think, I think you might be thinking specifically with regard to the city manager position or the city council president with regard to the four votes and whether there's a quorum or not.
Okay.
Because there was a lot of discussion about that and whether or not, and I will get to that. That was a substantive change by the... In a way, it wasn't a substantive change. I think it really was meeting the original intent. The original charter just wasn't written as clear. And I think that's what you're talking about, Elizabeth.
Yeah, that sounds right.
So this one, getting, going back to 3.6, it simply is saying that a majority of the members currently serving on the council, excluding vacancies, shall constitute a quorum. So a majority of whoever you got. So if you have a maximum of seven, but you have two vacancies, now you have five. So a majority of five is three. So a quorum would be three in that unique circumstance. Does that make sense to folks?
Yep. We good there?
Okay. 4.1 at the top of the next page, page four. And again, we're in the right-hand column. Again, that first sentence is added. It is the league version. It does say that when you have a legislative authority, you adopt it by ordinance. And the reason for that add is to make it clear for referendum purposes when somebody wants to refer an ordinance that they don't like. So we pass an ordinance and somebody gets a petition together. You can't refer something that's administrative, that you would adopt by resolution. So for example, if we adopted something by resolution, typically that wouldn't be referable. So we wanted to make it clear that that's how we address legislative one. Again, a technical change. Again, not changing the meaning. The next section, 4.2, it's Sub B. If you look at the Sub B in the third column, it's basically just splitting that out a little more clearly. And this is the issue of adopting an ordinance on first reading. You may all know that first reading, you have to have the ordinance available. We've changed that from seven days to five days. The committee agreed with that change. And because that's frankly practice, is the council packet. But if you just read better and made it more clear what you have to do, so you could see that was split into B, 1, 2, and 3 in the latest version. Again, not a substantive change. You have to have all members, all members that are there and voting would approve it by unanimous. That was one of my issues, is it wasn't clear if you had an abstention. And so I want to make it clear, if you're not voting, you don't count as... You can still have a unanimous vote with an abstention, if you see what I'm getting at. So those things made that clear. The next change is in Sub C, right underneath that. And that'll be repeated in a couple of places for ordinance, for resolutions and orders. Just clarifying that it must be read aloud at the meeting, which was added. And the word amended was added. Again, not changing the meaning at all, just making it clear that a substantive change has to be read aloud at the meeting. Because before it just said "read aloud." It's like, where? So... Next page... That's the only change in that whole 4.2 section, those two. Resolutions, again, 5.1 on the next page, page 5. If you go down about halfway. That next, that first sentence was added back from the league's version. The council will normally exercise its administrative authority by approving resolutions. With the, with that word, which was in the league version, but I didn't really notice it before, I didn't have a problem with it. Because what it says is normally would do that. We may sometimes exercise administrative authority by order, depending on the type of thing. But normally it'd be by resolution. So with that change, we thought that that was better. And next one under, in 5.2. In 5.2B, it was the same change as before with regard to amendments. Everybody following me there? In other words, read aloud. Again, these are just minor changes. But I wanted to point them out to you because they were not changes the committee had reviewed. And that's the reason to go through that. On the next page, page 6, Sub D was added to be parallel with the ordinance, the ordinance requirement. Mayor shall sign all resolutions within three days. We have a requirement for that for ordinances, but we didn't have that requirement for resolutions or orders. So we placed that there. And moving on, on page 6 to 6.1, in orders. Again, the council will normally exercise its quasi-judicial authority. That was the add there. And again, in 6.2, the same changes as before with regard to amended orders and signing orders in three days. Everybody clear on that? That's in 6.2 Sub B and Sub D. Okay, so far? Okay. Next page, page 7. 7.4 at the bottom there. If you see the first part, the mayor and each counselor must be a registered voter in the city, under state law. And we've added "at the time of election or appointment and during the term in the office," which was implied. But it wasn't clear when you had to be a registered voter. So I think that that was a good add. I don't think that's a substantive change at all. That's just clarifying when you have to be a registered voter as the mayor and each counselor, so... And then at the, and that's all. We repeat the whole section.
Counsel Kohler has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just point of clarification, then. The, the column on the far right, are the changes, or is that...
Those are the only changes that I made after the committee approved it.
Okay, so in the second column, where on that same page, there's another section 8. It's what it says, section 8. That is going to remain the same?
Okay, so if you go back, are you, are you... I'm sorry, which one are you referring to?
This, we're on page 7.
So 7.4? If you go over, it's really the third column over that is the committee-approved version.
Okay.
The third column over is the...
Okay, so basically, section 8 was renumbered to 7.3.
Yeah, I haven't... Oh, right. See, and it...
On page 7.
Finding section 8.
Page 7.
Okay, so that's the current version of the council.
Page 7, second column.
Okay. You really need to be looking at the third column as to what the committee approved. So the third column was renumbered to 7.3, as you indicated. But we really kept the Kaiser version.
Perfect, that's, that was my question.
Usually, any changes at all were noted in the fourth, fourth column over to indicate what was changed. So I don't see any changes there. So it appears that is identical. We did not change that from the Kaiser version.
Thank you.
Hang on, Counsel Herrera has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You're going electronically, aren't you? I am. Okay. Well, I was going to say, if you go to the very first one, it'll tell you. And then just kind of keep it up. That way you don't have to go back and refer to it as far as suggested changes or current, whatever. But I was just clarifying exactly what that meant. Electronically anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Is the electronic version look pretty much like the paper version, or...
It doesn't have any headings on each page.
Oh.
So you can't do what I was trying to help you out with, that type of thing.
Oh, no, the headings aren't online either. The headings are only on the very first one.
They're just on the very first page. But I just wanted to clarify what we were keeping and what we weren't.
Yeah, and I apologize for not pointing that at the beginning. I'm just so used to this. I'm sure the... You know, we skip, like, oh, yeah, you guys don't know that? Why? We knew this, we've been doing it for six months. So I apologize for that. The very first version in the column is the league version. The second column is the current Kaiser version. The third column is the final Charter Review Committee-approved version. The fourth column is the explanation. And then this last column that I just added was these minor changes. And we repeat the whole section because it just is easier that way, format-wise. Otherwise, it gets all goobered up. But as you can see, a lot of times, we've only changed a couple of things in each section, so... So was there, going back to the bottom of page 7, was there any questions on that, the being a registered voter?
Didn't you change from electorate to registered voter?
Yes. And that was, that was a change throughout, is the elector version was changed to a registered voter. And really, there weren't a lot of substantive changes other than removing Section 44, which was the no-special rights version. That was a vote early on by the committee to recommend removing that and the registered voter one. Other than that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call all the other changes totally non-substantive. But they were pretty minor, and most of them wording changes. So I am on...
Okay, Counsel President Freeman has a question.
It's really not a question, it's just more of a comment in why we changed that. Because the committee, this seems weird, I'm laying down up here. Just the Charter Review Committee really talked about elector. And do people really know what that means? Again, plain language. So if someone's looking at our charter, they know exactly what that means. So that's why we changed it to registered voter. So it really doesn't change the meaning, doesn't change anything. It's just an easier read and clarity, so everyone knows, so... But a lot of good discussion, as Counsel Kohler said, around that conversation. So, thank you.
And I appreciate you stopping me there, Counsel Kohler, because it was in my staff report, but I meant to mention it at the beginning. On the last page of my staff report, the issue was elector. Obviously, the Section 44 and the five days instead of seven days for the ordinance. Really, there weren't hardly any other substantive changes. So, so we are almost done, and I'm sorry for the echo. Okay, so at the bottom of page 8, oh, again, this was just to change counselor. So it was a, it was council office, and we said counselor office in the vacancies in the very first line, just to indicate that the mayor or counselor office becomes vacant. And that's the only change in that section. The next section is, the next page, city manager. And that change is actually on the following page, which is page 10. And again, that is... Now, this is a slightly substantive change on the city manager. And it was after, where we, the council, the committee made it clear that they wanted to keep the current version of the charter, which requires four votes to remove the city manager. So it doesn't say majority. But I noticed after, I'm sorry, I didn't catch this before. But if you look at Sub B, towards the top of page 10, in the third column, which was pretty close to the current language, but it says a majority of the council must appoint and may remove the manager. But then later, down below, it, it says, under C, can't be removed by less than four counselors. So which is it? Because a majority might not be four, right? And so it was pretty clear that the intent has been always that it'd be four counselors to remove that. And so we wanted to make that clear. And so the substantive change, though, that I want to make sure you folks agree with, is before it appeared that a council could appoint a city manager with a bare majority, even if that was less than four. And I don't think that would be the intent of council. I mean, that's technically a substantive change. But I can't imagine a council would want to appoint a new city manager with three votes. So the change there is, you can see in the fifth column, a vote of not less than four council members is required to appoint or remove the manager, which I think kind of jives with what the intent would be. So any questions on that?
If I could run a comment here real quick. It's also questionable as to whether a new city manager would agree to take the job with only three positive votes.
Yeah.
So you would just have a difficult time getting somebody to agree to appoint. I think realistically, you would find an interim through the lead board in cities or something like that to act for a period of time until you had a majority councils.
Yeah. I would think if you had a unique circumstance where you actually had two vacancies, you would be getting the council, a full council together before you would appoint a permanent city manager anyway, right? So, so that was, that was really, of all these changes that I've been making, the only truly substantive one, I think. On the very next page, at the very top of page 11, subsection 7, which unfortunately, because of the pagination, you can't look, you have to flip back. It's just changing the word administer city utilities and property to have general supervision over city utilities and property. We're in the city manager power section now. Just kind of made a little more clarity to it. The city manager doesn't really administer city utilities. They have supervision over it. And that actually matches frankly, the current version of the charter a little better, too. So that was a change from the league version. And then, don't have any changes for a couple of pages. In page 13, municipal court. The league version says, and this is in 8.3A, which is on page 13. A majority of the council may appoint and remove a municipal judge. A municipal judge will hold court. And we changed it to "at such place as the council directs." The other version says "will hold court in the city at such place as the council directs." Just the possibility that for some reason you would hold court outside the city. We wouldn't want to have that restriction in the charter. You may have a unique circumstance. Obviously, this council can control that. So I felt that was appropriate. And then on the next page...
Hang on, Shannon.
Sure.
So the main idea, though, is that court is being held in a location that is accessible and convenient for the defendant and anybody who would be coming to, you know, participate in a case.
Correct.
So you don't, you don't, we don't want to make it so that we are excluding the ability of anybody to have the people they need as part of their case. So I think that's the main idea, is accessibility for, to make sure that you have equal access, like the law of justice.
Right. I think the only possible thing I could possibly think of is if there was a huge disaster, this building got wiped out, there wasn't really an appropriate place to hold court in the city. But remember, the council controls this, not the judge. So the council directs where court will be held. So if you have a unique circumstance where there was a courtroom available in the city of Salem, and the council said, okay, you can hold court there temporarily. And you wouldn't be disobeying the charter.
So the state law under which this would fall, though, because there's a reference to it, but I'm not sure what the state law is because there is state law governing the, the location for being held, being able to conduct judicial activities. Would that cover the accessibility and reasonableness?
Yes. Yes, certainly. Because we have to abide by all the... Well, I should speak out of turn here. We have to abide by all laws that directly affects us. Some state laws, I don't think it's true in this one. And I know this is true in some of the statutes dealing with cities that are not home-rule cities. So some of those statutes don't apply to a home-rule city. I'm not sure that that wouldn't be the case here, though. So I think that we would still have to abide by state law with regard to access. So if you're talking about like ADA access and other access like that?
Well, I'm talking about ADA access, but I'm also talking about convenience for witnesses and other parties to a case, being able to just as easily participate.
Right.
That we don't move a venue to reduce participation.
Right.
That's my, my concern here. So by saying it can be outside the city, I think we're opening ourselves up to that possibility.[1708.86] possibility. So I'm really not comfortable with that, with that change.
Okay.
Because of that possibility. Because the way it's written right now, it doesn't preclude being able to do that under normal circumstances. I understand under emergency circumstances, that's different.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe there's something we need to put in there that allows for an emergency clause, but I believe that if we're going to put it into the charter, that it has to be clear that this is going to be, you know, in your home jurisdiction, so that all parties, both, you know, prosecution, defense, if you will, can equally participate and access the proceedings.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So let me work on that a little bit. We could, we could, well, we'd either just change it and say it has to be in the city, and we'd figure out someplace where it'd be, that'd be the simplest.
Well, under state law, under an emergency, then we would be able to designate another, an alternate location, I'm assuming. Or would you check on, make sure that that would be one of the powers that could be enacted under an emergency declaration? Because I can't see this being implemented without an emergency declaration. Otherwise, this building or someplace within the city that we designate for holding municipal court.
Right.
Would be accessible. So if we're going outside the city, there needs to be a dang good reason why.
Right. No, I was having trouble coming up with a scenario, too. Like, the only one I came up with was that kind of scenario, where the building was gone, you know?
Right.
And there wasn't a reasonable place elsewhere in Kaiser, which, you know, would be doubtful. So let me, let me look at that and try to address that.
Okay. Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm wondering, especially under the current circumstances, if provisions might also be made for virtual court hearings and so forth. I mean, I know we haven't done that, I don't know the legalities of that certainly, but just in our current circumstances where that could have been an issue, I wonder if we should consider that as part of this as well.
Well, I think we can do that without changing anything in the charter. I think we can do that now. The circuit court and all courts, well, I don't know about all the courts, but in Narian County at least, they've been doing virtually everything electronically.
So this, this just has to do with physical place?
Yes.
And in the event of emergency, it's more likely that we would go virtual anyway?
Right.
So, okay. Thank you.
And then on the next page, which is page 14, subsection G, it says, "The council may transfer some or all of the functions of the municipal court to an appropriate court." We took out the word state court. It says, "Outside council indicated there is a provision for this. Very unlikely to happen, but a future council may want to transfer the jurisdiction to either a state court, which is allowed, or to justice court, which is not exactly a state court." So we took out the word state and just said appropriate court. Gives you full flexibility then. Again, not likely to happen, but you want that flexibility in the future. 9.1, again, this was just a change from councillors to council members, the language in the second sentence of 9.1, change from councillors to council members, includes the mayor.
No change in pay scale. Same number of seats.
No change in the pay scale.
We got a 100% raise. What are you talking about?
So then the next page, there's two or three sections that, outside council, and I had debated this when we were doing it with the Charter Review Committee, and I was thinking about it further, too, that are kind of old sections that, even though the model charter is fairly new, they've just sort of gotten left over. So at the top of page 15, section 10.1, it's procedures about governing public improvements. Most of that is covered by state law. And my colleague pointed out that, you know, it doesn't hurt, but there could be some confusion between state law and this, and state law probably does control. And so although they're virtually similar, it just makes more sense to not have it in. And that's the 10.1 having to do with public improvements. That is what's called the remonstrance period, if you folks remember, with local improvement districts. There's a, if there's enough signatures, you can't try to do it again for six months. That's straight from state law, anyway. So the suggestion was to take that out. And it's the same thing for 10.2, special assessments, and it's the same issue. And that's covered by state law, and we're regulated by that. That's not something we have, that's not something that we have home rule authority And then on the next page, we renumbered 11.8, there's no change to that. And then under, delete this section, page 16, condemnation, same issue. Condemnations set forth by state law. And although state law says virtually the same thing, there's really no reason to repeat it and have a possibility of some confusion between state law and our charter.
Well, especially if state law is amended, then our charter becomes outdated again and doesn't make sense.
Right.
If we're, if we're not going to do something more than the state law does in any of these regards, then it doesn't make sense to have it in here.
Right.
Okay.
So if you go to the next page, page 17, although I didn't mark it, that's the section 44. Early on, the committee recommended removal of that. You can see that in the second column. Section 44 would be removed at the direction, at the recommendation of the committee. And then at the very end, or virtually the very end, I guess it is the last page, a new section that, outside council, and that's Chad Jacobs, if anyone knows the name, he's been with the Barry Ellsner firm for a lot of years, used to be general counsel for the League of Oregon Cities, actually.
Oh.
And so I've known Chad for a long time. In any event, he says, their clients, they have a lot of smaller municipal clients, one larger one, they represent Hillsborough, but then a lot of, a lot of smaller ones outside the metro area. And he says, a lot of his clients, he's been recommending that new 11.7, pretty much states what is, most city attorneys would think is common knowledge, but good to make it clear. And that is pretty simple, and that is, you can't amend, revise, or repeal the charter unless it's voted on. And either the council by majority vote or city voters by initiative may refer an amendment, but only the council by majority vote may refer a revision. And that has always been what I thought was the case, but it's not actually in the charter. So I thought it was a good idea to add that. So that took a little longer than I thought. It was almost as boring as I thought it was going to be. Any changes before I go on to some of those deferred items? All of that?
Well, in all fairness, because I was here for the first meeting, when you were talking about, you know, this is stuff that, of course, you know, you find interesting because this is what you do and so forth. But I was interested that the members of the committee seemed to really, really understand what they were getting themselves into. They signed up, and it's because it's interesting, because it matters.
And they were, they were really detailed persons.
And I'm actually glad Madam Mayor you brought that up.
I was just talking to somebody late last week or even today, that the members of the committee, oftentimes like members of the planning commission, are okay with detail. And they did get into it, and were not as bored as I was afraid they were going to be. So it actually was a good group of people. Very thoughtful, and it was a very good exercise. I think it, I think it accomplishes its purpose well, so.
Counsel Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In section 9.1, it talks about compensation. And in the Budget Committee last year, I didn't mention it this year, Budget Committee last year, I asked the question, should we consider giving the mayor a stipend? And what I meant by stipend was, and I don't think that people understood it the way that I got the reaction from it. Stipend to me is like a hundred bucks a month, something just to pay for all of the little things that the mayor ends up doing extra for the city that they don't really, really get any compensation for. Maybe it's $50 a month, I don't know. But to consider something like that, I think might be worthwhile. Am I suggesting that, that we start paying people? No. But this, that section, when it talks about compensation, has made me mentally revisit that and just bring it up.
And now would be the time to bring it up, or not now, or the next meeting. You can look at the very far column in the league's version, it says, "The council must authorize the compensation of city officers and employees as part of the approval of the annual city budget." It doesn't define the word city officers. I'm not sure they mean to include council, but that is the case in some cities, that they do have a stipend. That was, I think that phrase, yes, you can see in the fourth column, it's the LLC version format-wise, but we added the last sentence from the Kaiser version. We had no direction, and there was no discussion at the committee level about changing the unpaid nature of your jobs. So unpaid except for ordinary and necessary expenses. Cut out to you folks, what you want to consider on that.
Well, I think right now we have guidance on what is a reimbursable expense. Tracy does a good job of making sure we understand what those are, so we can turn in receipts and be reimbursed for expenditures relative to the work that we do. I know it's an extra step, but it is something that makes it really, really trackable. This is something that, I don't, I can't speak for prior mayors, but it's something that I do turn in when it is a reimbursable expense under, I think we use the, Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, don't we use the DAS, the Department of Administrative Services' travel policy, as a foundation for our reimbursable expenses? We do. Okay. So that's, that's accessible to anybody who wants to look that up. We have the Oregon County Manual that has the parameters for travel and other reimbursable expenses, what's allowed, what's not, and also what kind of documentation needs to be included, so that we have the transparency, so we know what the dollars are being spent for. So in my day work, since I do work for the state, it's something I'm very conversant with, because I've been doing it for about six years. But that's something that we have to train on each time, so city councils understand what are reimbursable expenses and what are not. But I appreciate the thought, because we all have our pocket that, you know, sometimes you go, I'm not going to turn that in. And I get that. But it is an option that we have, and we do have rules that go up, that do define what is a reimbursable expense. So Counsel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just think that there's an awful lot of things that we ask our mayor to go to, where he's, she hears, she is representing the city of Kaiser, that are not reimbursable expenses, like a grand opening for something, or any type of a business extra thing that maybe you're leaving work, you're, yes, you're only driving from, from your office to someplace in Kaiser for a groundbreaking or for something else. But those are still expenses that you do have, and it's an inconvenience, and it's a lot of things, that's why, you know, $50 stipend or something like that to reimburse for some of those things, that's why I consider that.
Thank you for the thought. I'm going to go, Counsel President Freeman and then Counsel Herrera.
Counsel Herrera's.
Oh, yeah, Senator first, okay. Counsel Herrera?
Just along the lines of Counsel Kohler's comments, when I researched this earlier, I was surprised that there are a lot of Albany, the councils get stipends. I mean, I mean, they're not, you know, they're like $50 or $100. But I was surprised to learn that a lot of local communities do get, not only the mayor, but the council gets stipends. If you look, if you research it, you'll see, you'll be surprised. I think Albany was one of them, where they get, but it's not uncommon, just so you know, along the lines of that. And I do agree with Dan on that point about, you know, you're running around doing stuff. I do that. I mean, I know exactly what you do and how it can add up. I mean, so I think it's something that you could explore.
Well, especially as a barrier.
It's not uncommon.
Yeah. You're right, Counsel Herrera, it is not, thank you for that, that comment, and also to recognize that it can be a barrier for someone to be able to serve as fully as they would want to be able to do. So I think it's a worthwhile conversation to have, because it does impact all of us through our service, you know, through expenditures and time away from family and from business. So your point is well taken, both of you. Counsel President Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So where I was going is from an equity and inclusion perspective. I think Counsel Herrera's brought that up in the past, and I applaud saying, you know, the mayor, but I can say everyone on this council has had expenses, and people choose to run for office for many reasons. I don't think anyone chose to run to get rich, you know? But I also think that, you know, in the face of changing city, you know, diversity in our community and for diversity on council is, you know, maybe that is something that we do look at, because someone, you know, $50 may get someone to say, yeah, I want to be part of council, and, you know, $50 is going to just even pay my gas going to all the places potentially that that person may go. I, you know, I just want to make sure that we're thinking beyond the people that are sitting here today, not that, that to shed any light that it's not valued, but I just think we had a lot of conversations earlier about, you know, on our emerging community, and maybe that is a way to have additional people come forth and want to be part of council.
Mr. Johnson.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I can check on this and get some examples from other cities, bring that back to you folks, and you can noodle on that, if that works for you folks.
Sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
Everybody go with that?
I made a note.
All right. Good discussion. Thank you.
So the next item I wanted to go over is what the committee called the deferred items. And if you refer to my staff report at the beginning of the packet, kind of towards the bottom of the second page, there were four items that the committee called the deferred items. And I think the committee specifically wanted the council to know about these items. And I'll just go through them one by one. You can see section A there. The first question was whether an at-large or a ward system would be appropriate. And I wouldn't suggest getting into a discussion on this tonight, since we haven't had public hearings, but I wanted to go over those, so you'd be prepared for the public hearings. There was a lot of discussion at the meetings about that, and ultimately, the committee voted to leave, in fact, they voted, as I said in my staff report, on all of these, to leave the current version. The vote on that first one was a six to one vote. We had, six to one?
Eight to one.
Seven to one.
Eight? Because aren't there nine on the city?
We had one person missing.
Okay.
So I think it was seven to one, if my count would be right. Because we had nine, but there was one absent, so we should have had eight. So it was one voting in favor of the ward system. So they pretty overwhelmingly wanted to keep with the at-large system. The second one was whether or not there should be either head-to-head or top three. Right now, we have council positions one through six, and they're head-to-head positions, somebody picks the position they run for. And the issue was, should you have an election where you just pick the top three winners? So if you have five people running, and the top three would get the three positions. There's a fair amount of discussion on that. That received two votes, so I think, I think it was five to two. Was it seven or eight? Let me count this here for a minute, so I got this right.
Well, there were nine people, one absent, that would be eight, so six, two?
You know what? I apologize. There were two people absent.
There were two.
I was wondering how I got the count off. Counselor Wayland, Commissioner Wayland and Kute Kune were absent. So we had seven instead of nine. That's how I was getting the count off. So the vote on that was five to, five to two on the top three idea. And the last two were unanimous. And the third one, C, was the four-year terms, whether to do four-year terms or change councillors to two-year terms. And that was unanimous, no, let's leave it the same. And then the last one also was about vacancies. So the question is, is to replace vacancies. So when a councillor, council seat is vacant and resigned, or we had a death or we had a vacancy. Right now, we appointed a replacement for the entire rest of the term. Some places like Salem, if the, if there's more than a year left in the term at the time of the vacancy, they have a special election. And so the question is, should we do something like that? And again, unanimously, the committee indicated, no, we don't want to change that, we do want to have the council appointment process stay the same. So ultimately, on all four of what we call the deferred items, the committee chose to leave the language, if not the exact language, and the concept's the same. So, any questions on those items?
So I have one. In some jurisdictions, if there's a vacancy created in the first half of the four-year term, they run to, they're appointed, and then they have to run in the next election to be able to finish the term, and then that seat then goes back to the usual four-year cycle. So if it happens through year one, at the end of year two, they run so they can finish years three and four, and then move forward. Was that what option discussed?
I don't recall that specific option being discussed.
Okay. I was just kind of curious. We've had, you know, a few over the years, but, and they were early on, because Counsel Freeman, you were earlier on.
Six months.
Yep, six months in, and, yeah, we've had a couple like that. So I think Bruce Anderson came on that way, too. It was very early on. We had a resignation. So it happens once in a while, where we do get someone who does almost an entire term. Counselor Moyer came back for a third term, the same way. We had a resignation.
Appointed.
Yeah, she was appointed for, to complete the term that had just started.
Kept recycling on us.
Yeah. So anyways, a thought, if so... So anyways, a thought, if somebody feels really strongly about being able to, you know, have that person run for the rest of the, to be able to fill that term, or if it would be constructive, but definitely want to keep them on the three and three cycle. And I think maybe it was discussed, I hope that having the staggered terms really, really helps with the continuity and the experience being on council, because if you flip the entire council in one swell food, that would be a very steep learning curve for the majority. And I think it would be not as helpful for the success of the councilors. So, just my humble opinion. Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that I was impressed with Counselor Freeman's ability to help some of the members of the committee understand why it's so important to have that four-year term and have it to be staggered like that. I'm just very commendable the way you did that. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, Counselor President Freeman?
Well, it was, I think the other nice piece is, I was a counselor who filled a vacant term, so I could talk about that, and Shannon forgot about that. So I, it just, yeah.
Yeah, she did.
Yeah, my first term was, yeah, remember, you and I? You and I ran against, we sat at that table and did a five-minute conversation. So I think it was really good to have that experience, talking through it. We did talk a lot about, you know, a two-year term, or, you know, and half the others, and I really did voice opposition just for constant turnover, and with that, because whoever is up here is a team, and to have constant turnover every two years, and the learning curve is tremendous, whether you've been an active volunteer or a brand-new counselor like Counselor Smith and Counselor Kohler. I mean, it really does take a while to get your feet wet for, you know, I mean, it's just kind of those things you all have to learn, and so to have constant turnover, or even two people on a two-year term, and everyone else is on their three-year, you know, their four-year term, still is that turnover, and I'm just not sure that that's one good for our city and for the cohesiveness that happens during council, so. Thank you.
Yeah, the institutional knowledge is very helpful, and then being able to mentor the incoming councilors, who also bring their body of strength and experiences as well. So each council as a whole is going to have a different personality, if you will, but the ability to pass on that experience is very, very helpful. I know I found it very helpful when I first came on council, to have people who had experience be able to let me know what the history was, you know, how did we get to where we were with a particular issue, and then I could take it from there, do my own research, and then make decisions going forward. So I think it was helpful. Continuity without stagnation, I think was the idea. All right. Anything else that you want us to give some guidance on tonight, or, and then what are the next steps?
So the next steps is, we have scheduled public hearings for both the next two regular council meetings, June 15 and July 6, and those are noticed, both of those, and I think they're on the website, and we're going to run them on the sign and notice in the newspaper. So to give plenty of opportunity for folks to comment, so those will be coming, like I said, the next two regular council meetings. And it'll be up to you folks on how things go with those meetings, on whether the evening of July 6, you give preliminary direction, or if you want to come back one more meeting. But I want to be working on the actual ballot title explanatory statement and things, and plenty of time to get by the deadline in August, which I don't recall the exact date, but I don't want to come close to that deadline, obviously, so. I will be moving forward unless, I mean, we don't, it's a work session, so we don't vote unless there's objection, I'll be making those little tweaks in that fifth column as far as the working version for you guys to work with. And check on a couple of questions we had here tonight, and then come back in the next meeting, and see what the public thinks. And then you, maybe you'll have additional opportunity to go through this between now and just next week, I guess, 15, but to see if you have any questions on some of those, I would urge you to check the matrix to see what the changes were. If you look in that fourth column, you can see what the changes were, and you can give me a call anytime, let me know if you have questions on any of that. Like I said, a lot of it was just wordsmithing, so.
Well, wordsmithing, but one of the things early on I remember noting is that the document was edited to be gender neutral. So things like that, that modernized it, and also a lot of language, such as changing the word elector, which is not commonly used to register voter, which is something that everybody understands exactly what that is, what that means. So it's clarifications like that that bring it into language that we use, that we can understand, and that we can have a conversation with people in our community and speak the same language. So I think that, those clarifications right there give this process a great deal of value, on top of which, the tremendous detail work that everybody put in, everybody came prepared, engaged, thoughtful, and really took the time to take this very seriously, which is, I appreciate, because it is a serious matter, this is our governing document, and to have nine people volunteer to spend that quality of time, I think is a real testament to the type of volunteers we have in our community. So I appreciate that very much. Okay, Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I feel like I'm talking too much tonight, but Counselor Herrera and I attended quite a few of those meetings, and it was amazing to watch the interaction between the members of the task force, and the work that they did was really commendable. There were a lot of things discussed that don't really show up on the document that we have in front of us now, so again, thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there any provisions in here that it be reviewed on any kind of regular basis, the city charter, because it seems like as a sort of living document, that might be worthwhile? I mean, I don't want to put another constraint of that, I was just kind of wondering, is it just when a major issue arises, then we look at our charter, or should we?
I would suggest not putting something in the charter, but you certainly kind of, by resolution, asked to review it. You know, there was a review, and I think we pointed it out in this document, I know we did in a previous one for sure, quite a few years ago, there was a charter review committee that ended up meeting several times and decided not to change anything, basically because there were some minor changes they thought they might want to make, but money was very tight, and they didn't want to have to pay any expenses for election, and they decided they didn't need, they weren't important enough changes to wait to the other general elections, so they recommended no changes. I wouldn't put it in the charter to have a required review, though, because that ties your hands. I would suggest the council, you or any future council can put it on a general basis, but it's not something that should be, have to be amended that often. I mean, going this long maybe is a little long, but most charters are not looked at even every five or 10 years, so.
When was the last time this got amended? In 97 or whatever?
The actual amendment was in 93.
93.
Right. And I didn't put it in this document, but in one of the previous documents, we did have another one, and I think it was, I don't know when it was, what date that was, I don't know if it was after the 93 one or not.
Are you talking about the, where we looked at it, decided to go change it?
But it was quite a few years ago. I know that. It was probably close to 20 years ago. So that's kind of all I have for tonight.
Counselor Smith?
Just wanted to say, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say one thing, that we were really, really careful in reviewing the charter to make sure that we were changing the verbiage to, you know, gender neutral. So if you read through it, it's, the goal was to make it so we didn't have to review it as often, because it is a government document. There were things that we could have put in there that were, you know, more statements, and I just want to thank Shannon for being so careful to make sure that we kept it as a business document. It's the document that is the business of the city, and we can do a lot of other things using other formats, such as the council rules and those things, so we can make a practice of that without actually getting into changing the charter, because it is something that we just, we put, and I have to give total credit to the people that were on that committee. They put their heart and soul and expertise and, you know, what they did. They picked apart every little word, every comma, and they did that for the intention of making this a long-term document, something that the city doesn't have to go back and review a bunch. There's a lot of things that we could always be reviewing as our city and our community changes, because that's going to continue. I mean, this, who we are in 2020 is not who we were in 1993. So I just want to commend them for the extra work, and I know Brody's in the back, and he did a lot of it, too, so I just, they were very careful to make sure that we could do this one time through and not have a bunch of changes needing to be occurred, and expenses, because it is expensive to get this out to the voters, so. So thanks to all of them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson?
One, I think Counselor Smith reminded me of, there's two items actually, one before I forget. I wanted to thank Tammy Harms, my assistant, who, after trying to figure out what happened with the first meeting, I asked her to come to all the next meetings, and she asked if she needed to be here tonight, and I said, "No, but she will be here for the next two public hearings." Kind of an extra set of eyes and hands and notes. And the gender, that is harder to fix than you think, and I will give all my thanks to Tammy, who did those fixes, a lot of different places, more places than you can imagine. That was one issue. The other issue is, the committee dealt with the issue of any kind of inclusivity language, the issue of inclusivities come up. We've talked about a resolution, possibly, if the council wants to move forward with that. On that particular issue, I wanted to make clear, the committee, based on my advice, didn't move forward with it as a charter issue. And the reason for that is, unlike those deferred items that we talked about, at-large, ranked voting, top-three voting, those are purely policy questions, I have no input on that at all. That's totally up to you folks, or ultimately the voters, on those policy questions. The inclusivity issue is an important issue, the council can choose to do with, and deal with that, but I would strongly urge that you deal with that in a resolution form. The reason is, is that the possibility of that basically turning into the unintended consequence of engendering litigation. And then if that did occur, then you can't change that charter without a vote of the people. And so, I mean, I don't express any thoughts whatsoever, one way or the other, in terms of inclusivity, it's just the location of how you deal with that, and so I advise against dealing with it in the charter. And I want to make sure I hadn't forgotten that item, so. But that is about all I have.
Counselor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam. Is there anybody else, when you researches, any other cities have anything about inclusivity in the charter?
I'm not aware of any in Oregon. I do know there are some in other states.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? So we will have two public hearings, and then we will deliberate on referring, or putting together the ballot title for November on the charter. Thank you all very much for your very hard work on this, much, much appreciated. It is 8:40, we are adjourned.